We call the opinion to order. We'll go by the clock behind you, which appears to be six o'clock. Would you all stand up and please join us as we say the place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you explain your old president accounted for? Anything for the agenda, any additions or amendments at all?
Nope, I don't have any.
Anyone else?
None here.
If not, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
I'll make a motion if you think so.
Okay, then the motion. Do they have a second?
Second.
Second by Anna. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. No scheduled presenters? Public input. If anyone wishes to speak to the board about things directly related to the school board or school activities, now is your chance to stand up and be noted. We are moving on. Consideration to approve the finance report.
Sure. Pretty standard sort of finance report this week, this month. The cash flow which that you have there is through the mid part of April. And not a whole lot of outstanding items. Now, we've kind of gone through the part, we've paid our debt service payments. We pay a lot of our leases, payments are going through. And we're really kind of like the just the normal operating part of our business. So on the left-hand column, revenues, most of what you're gonna see outside of just the cleanup of the county taxes on the very top are gonna be your ideas, payments, and monthly receipts that come in for items like food services, athletic fees, and whatnot. The idea is being the main payment received from the state of Minnesota for our funding. Left-hand column, essentially what you're seeing coming out of here are your monthly and weekly bills, and then your payroll for the next three months. It's like I said, most of the bigger ticket items have gone through now. You see our cash flow, it'd be more than just under a million dollars now in cash. We had been at that almost three million dollar mark until the debt service payments were submitted for the last board. And the good thing to note there is our cash flow remains positive. We're not having to borrow any funds for any aid anticipation borrowing, so. As we come through now, we've had a finance committee meeting, maybe that's better discussion, better in the meeting. I know there's some items about that, but looking towards revising a budget here for the current fiscal year coming up in the next couple of months, and then start looking towards the future and building the preliminary budget for fiscal year twenty-one will be on the horizon. So if you have any questions, I can do my best to answer what you have.
Will you throw the word aid anticipation? There are some years in past when we had to borrow money to pay our bills.
Yep. So typically, by statute, we receive ninety percent of our funding in the current year, and the ten percent will come in the next year. So in this current year, we're receiving ten percent of last year's funds plus ninety percent of this year's funds to get a hundred percent of our dollars. And a lot of times, whenever the state may have a problem or an issue with balancing a budget, or needing some funds on their own, a lot of times it's easier to kind of take it out of the schools part and change the funding. So there was a time where it went from ninety-ten to sixty-forty. And when that happened, we were losing about thirty percent of our current year funding. So we have to do some borrowing based on aid anticipation. We were gonna get those funds back from the state. It's pretty safe bet that that's gonna happen, and the borrowing is pretty flexible because of that. But in terms of cash, we don't have it on hand. We can't pay our monthly bills to operate. So we have to do some aid anticipation borrowing. The state will come through with it. We have put it on our books, so it's able to receive it, but it's just a mechanism for the state to help kind of cash flow their operation as well. So rather than borrowing, I bet the state, the individuals will just kind of put in non-fair backs to finance their cash for that time.
So when their budget is lean at the state level, they pull out from their largest debt?
Yeah, yeah, I guess it's just the easiest one for them to kind of, because it's gonna be paid. It's really kind of a short-term borrowing mechanism for the state to use. The interest costs are not reimbursed by the state for us. We end up paying those, but it is a solution for them in the short term.
Any questions for Josh? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the finance report as shown.
I will.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Brenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And is carry. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine, and we will enact them under one motion. In the event that a board member wants to discuss any single item, we can remove it for separate action. Please just take a moment to review the items under the consent agenda. Yeah, do you have any comment on any of them?
I do. I'd like to highlight the donations for the district this past month. Two of them, one from last year, that was Miss Being Honored, and then one this year, both of ten thousand dollars each from Dow W and M Maryland Anderson Foundation at the direction of Susan
Rudeselli.
Rudeselli. Okay, thank you for the help on that. For the Cannon Falls Elementary School. And do we have a plan for that, for those dollars yet?
We're looking at swings.
Okay. Thank you, Miss Shippie. Sorry to put you on the spot. Hundred dollars from the Mayo Clinic Anesthesiology and Perioperative Medicine Program for lunch accounts. A hundred dollars from Leandisus, Artisius for lunch accounts. Hundred fifty dollars for Walmart Red Wing for sleds for the elementary. Hundred fifty dollars from Target for sleds for the elementary playground. Eight hundred and ninety dollars from J-Bar Brand LLC of Cannon Falls for tabletop lantern. A thousand dollars from the Cannon Falls Fire Department Relief Association for the Eagle Bluff trip. Two thousand dollars from the Cannon Falls Fire Department Relief Association for scholarships. Ten thousand dollars from the Cannon Falls Education Foundation for a projector and large screen for the elementary. Two thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty cents from the Cannon Falls Ed Foundation for the second grade robotics kits. And fifty dollars from Red Wing Manufacturers Association for our robotics program. I'd like to thank all of these individuals and groups for donating to our schools.
It's an incredible amount of money.
Yes, it is.
Anyone else have questions, concerns, anything like that concerning the consent agenda? If not, I would look for a motion when you're prepared.
I'll make a motion against this consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Anna, to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Turning the page. No old business under new business. Consideration to approve a medical leave starting January twenty-one.
This leave would be for dead cattle. Recommend approval.
Want you to approve?
Second.
Motion, Anna on the second. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve reallocating the budgeted roof lease dollar amount for the remainder of fiscal year twenty.
Last year, the board approved budgeting for the full year for the roof lease project at the elementary, and that was paid off in January?
Mid-December.
Mid-December, sorry. Of this year, and so I'm requesting that the rest of those budgeted roof lease dollars be allowed to be used for needed facility improvements with one of the items that's been a recent topic of discussion in our elementary dishwasher. We would apply those dollars toward that as well.
So this, we talked preventative maintenance. Would this fall under the same? I guess it isn't preventative when we have a machine breakdown, but.
Right. I think if, for the rest of this year's dollars, we, and we'll be discussing this at the facilities committee coming up on Thursday, we do have items that we are targeting that are in need for the district. And then moving forward, I'd like to, and this will come up again when we start budgeting for next year, and with your approval, to move those dollars into a reserved account so that we can target these facility things moving forward while we have those dollars already allocated to facilities already. So it's just the moving of the roof lease to the other items that we have needs here in the district.
So it's so difficult to budget for things when they break down and fall down. This is almost a perfect opportunity for us to set up some type of funding for those rainy days, if you will, for the things that we aren't banking on. Discussion?
Well, I think typically, we haven't had a preventive maintenance approach. And so it's been taking it up as we go. Ten dollars between budget lines to make something work. So I think this is a good step in that.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Our administrative team agrees with that as well as a way to address some of the needed facility issues and preventive maintenance types of issues that we need here. There's some reactive things that we do need, like the dishwasher, the elementary that need to fix, but I think once we get on top of the ball, so to speak, that'll help us long-term.
Now, do you want to clarify on the history of the background of that, what the amount is, or? Okay. So when we did the elementary roof lease, which is, it kind of seems odd to release a roof, but at the time, we're receiving funds from Invenergy and have a cash, in lieu of tax for them. We get about three hundred thousand dollars from Invenergy each year. We got about eight years remaining on that, and then that will be having to be on the taxable, but we designated of that three hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars towards that elementary roof payment. When we did the roof, there's a large amount of copper on there. We were able to salvage, and that helped reduce the principal. As we were able to pay off the lease early. So we made our last payment in December of what, seventy-nine thousand dollars? That took care of that debt. We have it in the budget to pay the hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for the roof. So right now, there's about eighty thousand dollars that was earmarked for this lease payment that we have clear able to use and free up for elementary dishwasher repair, which has been on the docket or been talked about for several years now, and some other cleanup items. And I think there may be some discussion later, or maybe it's either in this meeting or in finance meeting, of maybe going forward, having those hundred and sixty thousand dollars earmarked or reserved for other facility needs as we go through. So we have kind of a plan on how to attack something rather than as a pay-as-you-go sort of deal. So that helps.
Could have been perfect. Thank you.
So we have a hundred and sixty thousand for the year is what the payments would be, but we spent eighty.
Yep.
So we have the half left for this year.
For this year.
But then we could, then you're looking to allocate that hundred and sixty next year towards like a, to be used for facilities?
Yes.
To get us back on track.
Right, and we have kind of a priority list going that we've discussed administratively that we'll be sharing in our facilities committee Thursday.
Okay. I think it's a great idea.
We look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
A second.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Larry, to approve the reallocation of the budgeted roof lease dollar amount for the remainder of fiscal year twenty. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the recommendation from the finance committee for fiscal year twenty-one budget. We met time runs by.
Thursday morning.
We had a seven a.m. meeting. Larry graciously sat in as a sub for us, and I think we had somewhere between eleven and fourteen members there. It was a busy morning. It was an hour and a half meeting, and I think it was well overdue that the finance committee needs to meet and at least on a regular basis, and not once every couple of years. And at this point in time, we're faced with getting our fund balance increased, and in particular, an undesigned fund balance. And so we had a lot of conversation, and it was really good input from everyone in the room, and now we'll turn it over to Jeff.
And Bob set me up there. Well, we've had discussions around our undesigned fund balance policy and where we currently sit at. And our current policy states that we are striving to be between eight and twelve percent. And right now, we are at two point seven five percent approximately in that range. And so the goal is to start moving the needle back toward the eight percent, become more fiscally solvable, if you will, or fiscally healthy. And one of the recommendations to come out of that committee passed unanimously was for, starting next fiscal year, is to cut three hundred and ten thousand dollars out of the expenditure budget initially. For us to get to a full eight percent, we would have to be in the neighborhood of six hundred thousand dollars, if not a little bit more in cuts. At this time, I myself and the committee feel that the six hundred thousand dollars is a large number to endure within one year. And so the recommendation from that committee is to cut three hundred and ten thousand dollars minimally at this point.
And then what percent?
Yeah, yeah. Oh boy.
That goes to, they'll bring it to about eight percent, lower eight percent total fund balance, which is just over about four, four and a half percent unassigned. The unassigned is a little bit of a needle that moves around based on how much is reserved, say for severance, other post-employment benefits. That number can change, plus or minus each year. And then if we start looking at reserving funds for facilities and those sorts of items, that would take or reduce the balance of the unassigned budget. But it puts about, it moves forward about one and a half, two percent in the unassigned, which is in a positive direction towards the striving of the goal of eight to twelve. I think the idea from the finance committee was to run and schedule it out, three to five years, have another look at it either in the spring or fall of next year, see kind of where we're at, and what can happen to it going forward. Because many times, you really have to wait until it already is cleared out to see where we're at exactly for the unassigned and assigned fund balances. But overall, I'm told that reduction, I think it's on the head of the books, at about a little over eight percent total fund balance, whereas right now, we're about six.
I know it's kind of premature to say where that money is going to be coming from, because I'm sure you haven't got it all together yet, though. Are we gonna see cuts in programming?
When I do cuts, my intention is to stay away from programming as much as possible. That is the intent. It doesn't always work out that way. When you're looking at three hundred thousand dollars plus, it's more than markers and sharpies. But my intent, and it's always been my intent when I've gone through this in other districts, is to stay away from programming as much as possible and to have it least affect children. So that is the intent. And I guess the way I would see it is that you would direct me and the administration to come back with you to the board with the cuts list. And I guess for myself, the administration is the ones that see these programs and everything from a broad picture on a day-to-day basis. And I would ask that if you, that you give it serious consideration and that you do pass it, the list that we come back with. It's okay to have discussion. I understand that, and we should be able to defend those cuts. But that would be the direction I would ask the board to go, is that you've asked us to come with a list, and we will provide you with a list. And again, we have children's best interests at heart. And that is the direction that we will hopefully proceed that looks best for the big picture as a whole.
Brenda, do you have something?
Well, I'm not sure if it's following, but Jeff said we had moved down to two percent. Is that the unassigned?
Two point seven five percent is the unassigned.
Two point seven five, okay. Our total is around six percent.
Six percent, so, yeah. And we hope to start moving the needle back with half of what we need to do to see how the budget reacts. And if it doesn't continue to move in the right direction, we may have to make more cuts the following year, or increase revenues.
In looking at this, this three hundred and ten thousand dollar cut, are we looking at any revenue, potential increases in revenue to offset that?
There's at least one increase in revenue. When you're looking at increases in revenue, you're looking at increasing the state formula, increasing the number of kids that come into your district. Increasing, there's another one I just had on my column. Students formula. Or raising the operating levy as well. That's sustainable over a period of time. I mean, you can, you can go out and get a grant that might provide you a little bit of money toward that, but that's not sustainable over a period of time. And so really, you're looking for increase in the operating levy for the number of students that you have taking in, or increasing of the actual formula that we get paid from the state for them.
And the difficult part about moving the percentages that, fund balance percentage is based on a percentage of the expenditures. So if you increase revenue but only offset it with an expenditure, say you get forty thousand dollars to support something, it stays the same. There is no increase. You definitely have revenue that doesn't offset an expenditure in order for it to go. Or you reduce the expenditures to make that a smaller number to divide into. So that, and we've gone over the last ten years, eight years, from about a ten million dollar expenditure budget to over thirteen million dollars. So our total fund balance was at about eight hundred thousand dollars at that point, is a larger percentage. The expenditures now, it's just a smaller percentage. So even though we've done a good job of balancing budgets as we go through, expenditures have increased, so the fund balance percentage has decreased.
One of the things that our high school principal reinforced is that even though we have declined enrollment, we're pulling kids in from other districts that choose to open and roll to us. And doing so, we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot and say, these kids are coming in because of the programming that we have to offer for our size and cut that said program and lose some kids out the door. So we kind of a balancing act, but one of the, one of the things that we've probably fallen short on as a greater board is that we're given a number of reductions, and it's been a few years ago, but we we don't really follow through with it from the humanistic approach. We just can't fathom cutting or reducing. And really, we have to look at our administrators as bringing the best options for us and the highest priorities that they believe will be in our best interest. Anyone else?
So the alternative right now, if we don't take the finance recommendation, is that we go where we're at right now and kind of hopefully ride it out. And if things turn south, you know, we have unexpected debt, problems. We're nearing statutory operating debt, right?
Yes.
So, so from the finance committee's standpoint, where did the three-ten number come from? Because I wasn't able to attend.
And to answer that question, we wanted to look at the number to get to that eight percent undesigned, which is around six hundred thousand dollars. Remember the exact numbers?
No, but it'd be about number two, six, twenty, sixteen.
So you kind of worked it then backwards and then coming out with the three-ten.
Yeah, and we decided to take instead of a one-year, rip the Band-Aid, cut the sutures, so to speak. It's, let's walk into this a little bit to see, you know, fifty percent, and if we need to, we always have the options of going further next year, or to look at different revenue options as well.
I think that's quite the important part of reviewing it again after the fiscal year twenty audit, to see where we fell. Because there are a lot of estimates that go in there. Estimated the percent of revenue increase for fiscal year twenty-one, the amount of expenditure increase, it could be higher or lower than the estimated cost of living. We don't just know those very well exactly. We can kind of estimate and come to a conclusion, but at this point, there is not a total ripoff of a Band-Aid. It's moving in the right direction, but not making it hurt overly to begin with. And then kind of see where we're at and where we need to go from that point.
And so over the last ten years, you mentioned going from ten million dollars
Expenditures.
to thirteen million. So you have a pretty good idea of where those expenditures are.
Yeah, so we can kind of follow, you know, on average, our expenditure is raised about three point seven eight percent on a year, if you were to average it out. And our revenues, so our expenditure is about three point seven eight, and our revenue is about three point six percent roughly. It doesn't quite follow the formula because we've had increases based on whether it be operating referendum, grants, those sort of things as they come through. And at one time, the state tried to balance out, increasing the formula, the better to help districts out, but so those are averages, and we make it more or less that depend on. So I think, you know, looking out three to five years and trying to do it as an X amount to each of these five years is a little unrealistic. We'll be able to have a good idea once the odd numbers for twenty come in, where we're gonna need to go for the next year. But at least it's proactive in terms of planning on a budget for fiscal year twenty-one. That puts us moving in a positive direction in terms of the unassigned fund balance. Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? I would look for a motion to approve the recommendation from the finance committee for the upcoming budget.
That would be the three hundred and ten thousand.
Yes. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Okay.
Yeah, as much as, as much as I don't like to see budget cuts. The last time, that's all we did, agreed, so.
It's been a few years for sure, though. A second?
It's hard to, I don't know what everybody else is thinking, but it's hard to approve something like this, and we don't know what those cuts are gonna be. I, I mean, I understand that this is a recommendation. We're not tied to it. Isn't necessarily going to be firm on that number, but it's hard to just say, yep, we're gonna agree to the hundred thousand dollars in cuts without knowing what those cuts are gonna be.
And what it looks like.
Yeah.
Or what the recommendations are gonna look like, like?
You can, we can, you give us the number. We come back with a plan that matches the number.
Okay.
And then that's when you, you're still gonna approve that, that plan, which I hope you would, because if you don't, then we're still sliding backwards and not solving our financial problem.
Right.
And so there's, there's things that need to be dealt with with the motions, and that's kind of the bottom line.
So who is all a part of the financial committee, like, or of the people who are, who are recommending the cuts? Who is all a part of that team? Is it all?
It'd be our admin team.
So it's the whole admin team from both buildings, and you have reference of, so.
Well, I agree. Your question is, who are the eleven to fourteen people that met, that came with this?
Yeah, and who are the, yeah, like, that came with this? Just, I just, it's just a lot to come at once, and.
Well, and another way to to explain it is that we're giving the superintendent and admin the task of trying to find a plan for three hundred and ten thousand dollars. And when they come back with that, then we have to decide if we approve of that to continue with the process.
Gotcha. And it's a recommendation, but this is the kind of halfway point of getting to where we need to be.
The committee itself had the admin team on. It had a couple of educators on.
Okay.
It had some, a local businessman, two people that deal in finance within the community, a banker and a financial advisor. So it's really a nice cross-section. Our facilities person was there. Our transportation person was there.
Okay.
So the heads of departments were there as well, so.
Two principals were there.
It's, it's hard, you know, in answering Anna's question, it's hard for us to, to gauge what the priorities are if we're not here on a daily basis.
Oh, absolutely.
Certainly, it's, it's one of the more unsavory tasks we ever have. Certainly, it's a, it's one of the more unsavory tasks we ever have is, is looking for reductions, but we need to trust this is the way we're supposed to go if we increase the policy of the unassigned balance increasing. So it's a hard call, but I think it's necessary.
I will second the motion. As hard as it is to.
Yeah, yeah. Some schools go through this annually. Other discussion, please open it up for more if you'd like to discuss this more.
Well, I think it's a good idea to do it gradually rather than try to do it all at once, that's for sure.
It's painful either way, but.
Yeah.
Have we looked, is eight percent where we want to be? Is that where other districts are at eight to twelve?
That's where our financial advisor advised us to be.
Okay.
But what is, what is statutory operating debt? What, that's three, is that at three percent?
No.
What is it?
Zero.
Oh, a zero?
They'll step in, I think, of course, zero, but.
But they've told us what it's been. They want us at eight to twelve, right?
That's what our board policy is, strive to be within eight to twelve.
No, I know that, but the, our auditors that are here.
Sixteen.
They, yes, they.
Yeah, and there are districts that are, have it up to twenty to twenty-five percent.
I think you'll find lots more at six. Can you do it fifteen? Especially in light of what goes on legislatively. I don't know if any of you got that. Our lobbying group C sent something out and it showed the time sequence from two thousand and three to present and how much the state has given us on each year. And how much we have to eventually go up to our taxpayers and ask to replace that. And it's pretty staggering. So we're getting lots less over the last seventeen years from the state to at least do the same and hopefully do more. But we're asking our community and they've always been very good to us, so I think we owe it to them to be as austere as we possibly can, but still not affect the quality of our education. We have a motion by Bill, a second, a second by Katie to approve the recommendation of the finance committee for the upcoming budget year of a reduction of three hundred and ten thousand. Of course, they'll bring it to us for approval. Any other discussion? All in favor of this recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Consideration to approve the twenty twenty spring head coaches. I don't know what page that's on.
Two, there are two.
Put the back end. Eighteen is the number page in the corner. Take a look if you'd like. And when you're ready, we can approve or discuss.
I'll make the motion. I can second it. I'll second Anna's.
Okay, Anna on the motion. Katie on the second to approve the spring head coaches. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Consideration to approve a retirement request.
Ann Melismon has given us her retirement notice and I want to thank her for her twenty-seven years of service to the district. Not only to the district, but also credit for her, obviously, the, the kids of the district as well and all the lives that she has affected. I would ask if you approve that request.
Make a motion.
Just second.
Brenda on the motion. Katie on the second to approve the retirement request of Ann Melismon. Any other discussion? We thank her for her time here. All in favor of the retirement request approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Consideration to approve the resolution announcing the availability of positions.
Before we go into this one and, and the second retirement as well, since we are kind of in cuts mode, and I know that you guys are always officially asked to re-advertise this position, how do you want to move forward if there's a position that we feel that we don't need to replace? Do you want us to ask for permission? Is, you know, some of these we won't know if we need to replace them or not. I'm not saying that there is truth here, but what is the, the, action you would like to have on this? Or the proper way of going about asking them?
We'd like to accommodate you to rationale.
Yeah, so after each retirement or somebody leaves in the, the district for another job, I could certainly bring my recommendation back at that point. And hopefully I would know. If we don't know at that time, we may have delayed posting until we do know. Is that fair enough?
Yes.
All right. I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that, that it may not, the posting may not go off. I, I want to make sure before we go further down.
Yeah, I think there's been some question as far as the timing in the past for availability of teachers and that sort of thing.
Sure.
I've kind of.
Usually it's in the later spring.
Right.
That it, the posting will come before, or yeah, just the timings were a little bit off, otherwise I think. I think if you just.
So if I come back and say, you know, you approved this request, but I'm going to recommend that we don't.
Yeah.
Whatever that looks like. All right, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
So that has no bearing on the resolution coming up here at all?
Uh, currently we have a, a teacher out on unrequested leave of absence from two years ago.
Yep.
Maybe three years ago. And with this position opening up, that person would be qualified. And so we need to announce this position, which we will be bringing back after Ms. Melismon retires. And so we just need to pass a resolution stating that we have a middle school, high school, Spanish teaching position open and we would send this person a letter that's on unrequested leave of absence, notifying this person.
Okay, so the approval would be the resolution announcing the availability, availability of positions. First we'll need a motion and a second, and then, and then our clerk can read the resolution. We have a motion to approve this resolution.
A motion.
Larry on the motion. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Anna. Other discussion?
So I, just clarification with your question. So we move, we post it, goes back to the admin team considering the cuts. And then you decide if that position's truly going to be needed based upon potential.
We would.
Movements.
Yeah. Yeah, we would, we would, you're giving us permission to post this and announce the posting for this one. And then so in each of these positions that we have either this month, next month, moving forward, you would give us your blessing to post it to YouTube. If we don't, we come back and communicate to the board that we are declining to fill this position.
All right. Resolution announcing availability of positions. Be it resolved by the school board of independence for district two five two as follows, that the following specific positions are declared to be available. Middle school, high school, Spanish teaching position. So we'll get our votes. Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Katie, yes. Larry?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Ann Bell?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six, zero vote. Thank you, Katie. Consideration to approve a retirement request.
Ben Schapp has requested, has put in for his retirement. I want to thank him also for his thirty-three years of service to the students of the district and to the district itself. Those are, it's another long, must-raise career.
Always a difficult one for other people that have put in that kind of time and influenced that many kids, not only in the classroom, but I think he's been cross-country and track coach for most all of those years.
He's played basketball for all. Tell us how you left that kind of drug.
This is a difficult one for us, so. Look for a motion to approve Ben's retirement request.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second with your votes.
Katie on the motion, Brenda on the second. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Going down to the next one, consideration to post and hire a science teaching position.
Listen, this can just be a regular board. It doesn't need to be a resolution because there's no teachers out on U L A.
Yep. Look for a motion to approve the posted hire.
I'll make a motion to approve posted higher site teacher.
Katie on the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Anna. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? We're almost nearing our time. Something not on the agenda. When, when I see that some people are donating to our lunch account. We can pick up the paper three or four times in the last year and see where schools have been, got themselves in a wringer because they didn't allow for students who fell behind in their lunch accounts to eat. Do we have a policy or do we have anything that we users speak to?
Most school districts should have a policy. I guess I haven't got that far in the weeds here yet.
As, as far as if they're allowed to eat or, or.
It's kind of sad when they're not allowed to eat and they've got a lunch account. I guess that's what I.
Yeah, I think if the headline is you're taking a lunch away from a student.
Yeah.
And I think some districts have given a, a minimal lunch. It's like a peanut butter and jelly sandwich.
Yes, and we do not do that here.
Yes, and I think that's where you're going.
We allow them to eat and then we figure it out later.
Yep.
It's, when schools do so many good things, it's hard when they get their names in the paper for maybe an rescue such as that, but it really, we know when our little people get hungry, it's a long time till supper. Thank you. Informational meetings, our next floor meeting.
Can I just interject really quick? I just want to shout out on page ten, Phyllis Eltop is retiring February twenty eighth, so I just wanted to thank her for her service. She.
Oh, in February?
Yeah, February. The three of those ladies certainly keep me afloat and just want to thank Phyllis for her awesome.
Yes, we want to thank Phyllis for her time and energy that she's put in the district and for all she's done for the kids in the district as well.
Thank you for that acknowledgement. We're going to pass that. That's a good thing. She put a lot of time in for us.
I just want to mention that the Ed Foundation auction is scheduled for April eighteenth. It'll be Mel Street this year at five thirty PM. So encourage everyone to attend. It's a lot, it's a fun evening, a lot of games and food and good food and everything.
Great event.
Yeah.
One of the big social events of our district, I guess. Okay, we'll approve the, the next meeting is February ten at six P M here. We'll approve the nineteen twenty spring assistant coaches and get some quotes in for our dishwasher, world's best sport, workplace plan document. And a number of other things. So if anyone needs anything else to add to the agenda or feels that we should be putting something forth, make some contact with Lori or Jeff and we'll see if we can get out there.
I've got a couple of things here also, just as updates if you don't mind. One, we are, we are moving along well with this Magalas tree donation. We had a very good meeting, our last meeting, and the D and R plan and our plan is merging together. And we would hope that we would have something probably in the March timeframe, if not the end of February, to bring to the board for you to consider. Just so that's kind of an update on that piece. And finally, a few of you have talked about coming or come to visit the district. And whether, I would encourage you to go into both buildings and we can give you certain things that we would like to have you see so that you get a, a reference point in some of the things that we were talking about. But we can also have you get out and enjoy some classrooms and some of the things that you want to see specifically as well. And so what I think I will do is I will either have myself or Lori get in contact with each one of you and maybe figure out some dates and times that we can have you come visit and spend some time in the school. Hopefully for a full day if you can. I know the, the principals and the, and the teaching staff would really enjoy seeing your faces in the school buildings. And then certainly I can lead you around the district if you wish, or we can set up just an itinerary for you for that day to go around and be a part of the school pretty. So we'll be in touch with you soon. Anything else? That is all I have for now.
Anything else from the team? We should acknowledge that we've got some attendees here that usually don't come. And my guess is that's part of our civics class. So we enjoy seeing you here. I think this is our third or fourth group that's come in and thank you for attending. Maybe you get something out of it, maybe you don't.
They took some notes.
Yeah, it's a requirement, right?
They took some notes.
Also boys go, so.
Notes.
Well, thank you for coming. Thank you for being here. Always enjoy seeing you come. Okay, if we have nothing left for the cause, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Anna on the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are finished.